Good evening and welcome to March 23rd, 2017 Planning Board meeting. The first item is a continuation of site plan for Ramado at 11702 River Road Recycling Center?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Everybody jumps. I just kinda like it when everybody jumps. I'm sorry. Neil's not here. Hold on, there's a voting member.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to start a recycling, metal recycling center on 11702 River Road. These are the items that I want to buy in there and set the environmental plan.
What is iron aluminum?
Just aluminum with a little iron on it and like bolts and that. Those are just all different grades of, you know, different types of metals that possibly could come in the door.
Oh, last page, empty left on computer towers, power supplies, those kind of items and capacitors and fluids in them?
No, it would be all those, it would be no fluids and no chemicals or any of that stuff. And I just put it in there just to be broad, but I don't think I would, we don't even handle computer scrap. But in case I ever wanted to do it, I just put it down there.
Okay, and the AC compressors, I'm assuming those would be empty?
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you, what's dirty, clean on a dirty radiator?
Uh, the metal, there's copper on the top, in the middle, and brass on the top, and then the metal ribs. So that would be a dirty radiator.
Okay, you aren't talking about a radiator?
Anything, any radiator-
You don't talk about a radiator full of air?
No, any radiator that has metal on it would be called dirty. And it'll be a separate price for that versus a clean price.
Clean price is just the copper.
Exactly, if you take that off, you get more money. If we have to do it, then we, we charge you. I mean, we don't charge you, we just give you a less price. Basically, you know, breaks down just a percentage of wire. When you, when you buy wire, it's, you know, there's a percentage of, you know, copper that's actually in it. So we just gauge the wire and tell you what, what it is.
Are you, you limiting yourself to this list or is, is this just a?
I would say that, I don't think there's much more I could buy.
No?
That, that's, that's a pretty big list, you know? I, I just wanted to let everybody know the stuff that could be possibly on the site. I don't deal with some of this stuff, but I'd rather be broad than, than tell you that it could be there than have it be there and not there.
So if I brought in some lead flashing, you would reject it?
Well, I mean, I would take lead flashing. There's nothing wrong with taking lead.
It's not listed.
On the third page, it says it's just lead.
Lead.
Oh, alright, okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing wrong with lead. Every joint in your house, every solder joint, one copper pipe is lead, you know?
You're already smelting a pair.
Right, yeah, that's, that's basically, you know, if you melted it or, you know. All we're gonna do is, you know, take it, box it, upgrade it, sell it.
Yes, I do. In the file.
So just out of curiosity, what's a 6061 solid?
Uh, that's a pot of aluminum. It's a 6061, it's a, has more nickel in it than, you know, different kind of alloy breakdown. We have like an electronic gun that if we, we shoot it, you know, we can tell you, tell you what it is.
Well, that's cool.
And actually, that's how we make money because if you bring extruded aluminum, that's all 6061.
Yeah.
And that's, we get like 70 cents a pound for that. But nobody knows that that's extruded aluminum, like a window frame, that's extruded aluminum. That's all, that's all, that's good, that's good for us. And people would just give you old sheet aluminum. If you brought it to Snitzer, they wouldn't tell you, they wouldn't care what you, what you did. Would, you know, they would just-
So you were ripping off your clients?
No, what I'm saying is, we, we, we wouldn't do that. But what I'm saying is, normally 6061 aluminum is all extruded or, you know, some type of structural aluminum like a channel or an I-beam, that's all mostly 6061.
On your site plan here, on the western side, proposed box trailer for scrap metal, proposed dumpster for scrap metal. Are those open top or closed top?
Um, the, the open top one would probably, one would be open top and the, one would be closed. And that would only be for, you know, like, if, if there was, you know, the scraps. You know, like, say, we took, like, a radiator and took the metal of flashing off of it, we would just pick that up and just throw it in a dumpster. And there'll be a dumpster there for trash also, you know, like waste, like pallets or whatever.
That's not possible trash, it's-
Whatever we generated from-
Debris that you have from-
Yeah, like, if somebody brought in, you know, like, uh, some piping with some rubber on it, you know, that would be the-
And, and any of the debris, trash refuse that you generate there, is it gonna be disposed of in our lane, at our transfer station here?
Waste management. This waste management dumpster at the facility.
Okay.
So your runoff is gonna go towards the crossroad road and that pipe that's decided to come over?
You should probably let Art answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't- What's your, which, which pipe do you tell?
Well, there's two pipes shown, obviously.
Yeah.
That's where all the runoff is gonna go across the road.
Pretty much.
And it's gonna go in, someone's gonna go in-
On that side of the property, some, some runs off into-
He's going to go into the wetland and across the, through the pipe, and the other side is gonna go into the, for lack of a better term, the hole, and across the pipe, right through the pipe.
Could I interrupt you for a second?
You already did.
I'm going to do it again.
Okay.
We have a new secretary.
Go ahead.
And in case she does not know who you are, before you start to speak, would you-
Okay.
State your name.
S. I. C. I. L. I. A. N. O.
Junior.
She is now.
That's how I knew how to spell it.
What is the 15-inch high-density poly, plastic pipe in front of the building for? To just, oh, you're driving over that to get, I guess?
Yeah. Yeah, to get into-
That's existing, I assume?
Yes.
Isn't there, um, a small brook that runs to the east, goes under Rockland Road, comes out of that wetland?
There's a covert, yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't be shown because it's not on the lot, but-
Yeah, it's pretty, it's, it's, I believe the brook part is, uh, over by the property line.
Yeah, actually, there's, there's-
In fact, it is.
There's some water falling this way.
So maybe the other piece, it's, just to the east of the wall.
Yeah.
Although, uh, can you, lights are gonna be downcast, is that a good assumption?
Yes.
There's three, two, two lights?
We, we propose two lights.
There's, I have three on the-
Oh, three?
Yeah, well-
Oh, one on the pole, one in the building?
One in each building, one on the pole.
Yeah, right.
One of the, one, one of the storage sheds is existing, right?
Yes.
Or am I missing one?
Proposed on the, the waste station building.
Yep.
Near the road. One on the, proposed light on the pole and existing.
Are those lights gonna be on at 2:00 in the morning?
I, I mean, they'll probably be on like a sensor type of thing, you know, if somebody came into the yard or whatever, it'll probably be-
The motion sensor?
Motion sensor.
We could add a note saying lights are to be motion sensor downcast?
Yes.
Or something like that. Does the existing light have a motion sensor on it?
No.
Could you add one? Would you add one?
I would just put new lights on, I would just do a nice new ones. They're all, two, they're, they're all crappy that are there, they're not very good.
I'm just trying to think of a neighbor's little bit of lighting. Lights are off all night, I'm thinking, light comes on, hopefully everybody says, oh, something's going on. May not be good. Anybody else have any questions for now?
See, we got the buffer on here, another one in the buffer. And there doesn't appear to be much vegetation existing within the buffer.
Well, there were trailers parked there, there are, there are a few trees in there and a couple spots I probably should've showed those. And then he's encroached, it was, you can see the gravel area there in the back has encroached the buffer. So I'm making a note there that the gravel area in the buffer should be removed and this area should be limited, see, at the minimum to at least get it back to- So there's no gravel. The container pod and dumpster that are off the property, those have been removed. The other two containers have not been moved yet.
Which two are removed?
The, uh, see the, see the ones that are all aligned there, container pod, dumpster?
Yep.
And the other little building, those have been, they're not there anymore. The other two big long ones are still there. They need to come back on, relocated.
Any idea when those will be pulled out?
I just wait, they're actually Frank Burrows. And he, he asked me to wait until we could find a place to relocate them. But, I mean, I could put them in, take all the stuff out, put them in trail and just crush them up like I did the other ones. I mean, a couple months, I'd say, month.
You could always pull them forward.
I could always pull them forward, if that's a problem.
What was that? Are those three items still there, Art? The can of pod and the smaller one and the two bigger ones?
Is that one still there?
Or is just two bigger ones?
Oh, that's gone.
Uh, he's saying-
Yeah, that's gone, there was a bunch of other ones, there was a bunch of stuff all over there, I, it was everywhere.
So it's just those two long ones that were?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe I'll take those off for this, can I take them off of your site plan? The ones that have been removed?
Yeah, I think we'd rather not have them shown on there from there because we haven't cleaned up on the ground here.
We'll take those off and I'll just take that arrow off.
And maybe put-
What's that?
On those two that are still there?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe put a, use that arrow going through and say it can be removed by a certain date, okay?
That's fine, that's fair.
What date are you proposing?
June 1st.
Is that, is that right?
Oh, absolutely, positively. Now, would you say once the weather gets a little better?
That's why I'm thinking June 1st, you know, a piece of month and-
Yeah, just give me one, you know, every, every week, it's been tough.
How big's your proposed sign gonna be?
I haven't really thought too much on that, but, I mean, I don't know, five by five?
You have to see for a sign from-
Four by eight, two-sided.
Four by eight, two-sided?
Five by five's okay.
As long as you want a smaller one, that's fine, but it's-
Yeah, right, I don't wanna-
Thirty, yeah, 32 square feet, two sides.
I don't need no big flashing sign, I'm not, I'm not a fuck that.
Is it gonna be, gonna be lighted?
Um, you want it to be lighted?
I don't want it to be lighted.
I don't, I don't need it to be lighted, so no lights.
I don't think he wants to work at night.
No, I wanna go fishing and relax.
There's a certain person that's not here that would certainly have asked that question-
I know.
-a long time ago.
He's lowering the cost of our booths, so we have to leave alone.
He's good for something after all.
Don't put that in there.
She's new.
So I'll put proposed sign, unlit slash unlit, no lights.
I would just put a note saying the sign's gonna be less than 32 square feet, two-sided, less than 32 square feet, unlit, yeah. So you have a little bit of snow storage to the east of the five parking spaces, very little. And you have a little bit up by the proposed porta potty. Is it safe to assume you're gonna put more snow up to the north where those containers are now encroaching over the property line?
I think right now we put it right there.
Right now, it's a big pile by the sign.
Yeah, I mean, I have Lotus, I mean, I could truck it all back there, it's not a big deal.
I wouldn't worry about trucking this, I'm thinking next winter.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, that snow storage could go across that whole back-
Right, setback.
Yeah.
Over where it says existing edge of gravel in the back.
Yeah, maybe I'll move, maybe I'll put another snow storage sign, uh, note there and-
Can you put, can you store snow in the setback?
Yeah.
Yep, and put a driveway in a setback.
Can't do it with the buffer, I bet you do a setback.
Okay.
I even do that.
So the note says you're gonna remove the gravel in that buffer loaming seat. You planning on looming and seating the entire buffer or just those little, that little area out there?
Just where the gravel is.
Isn't that pretty well disturbed the whole way down through there to the tree line?
Well, it's not gravel, but it is disturbed, yes, but if it's not, it's not where he parks on there anymore, things will come back.
Well, I'm trying, I'm hoping, trying to figure out a way to make sure that, not that he would, but he may hire somebody to plow the snow when the guy he hires pushes it all up against the end of the wetland.
I 100% agree with you.
And I'm trying to figure out some way to stop that from happening.
That would be the guys that I would hire. You hit the nail on the head with that one.
I have the same problem at my house, don't plow the snow that way, and whoop, there it is. I don't know how to solve the, solve it, but I know the looming seating would stop me from plowing the snow on it, but that's a first step.
If you planted a couple bushes, trees or whatever, every 15 feet or something, 15 feet long made in the buffer, that would give them a line to not cross.
Right.
With a no storage, no snow storage note on the plan. And that the plantings need to stay alive or be replaced.
Say seven trees? They'd be about 30 feet apart?
About 180 feet, so.
30 feet should be close enough together, shouldn't it?
Yeah. Seven trees.
So what kind of trees would the Conservation Commission prefer on their buffer?
Black ones.
Christmas trees would grow there fine, some kind of pine tree would grow there fine.
You know, why, why say seven? You can buy them 25 bucks for 25 trees.
Well, just put another one on that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not hoping for a tree this big.
They want more than two.
I'm hoping for a tree, you know, less than six feet.
Three feet tall.
You're gonna see over the plow.
Well, six feet, they get expensive, so if you buy one five foot 10, they're a little cheaper than six foot 1, actually, what a bit cheaper.
Yeah, seven trees, 30 feet apart, that's- To write on, write one into the buffer so they know what it, it helps to find the buffer.
Absolutely, like, I 100% agree with you.
Would spruce or fir be okay with you?
Fine, I don't care, whatever you want, I'll put it, you name a tree, I'll put it there.
What are you asking for?
Spruce or fir.
Spruce or fir, minimum five feet high.
Fine. It'll have a Christmas tree font.
How close, you don't want it right up, you don't want it right on the edge of it.
Yeah, you put it right at the edge of the buffer.
But now it's gonna encroach onto what he could use. It's gonna get big and it's gonna be-
Okay, you, couple feet back.
Five feet into the buffer, 20 feet off the edge of the welling. Give me five feet in there.
You could just put some metal fence posts until a little takes a step, whatever.
Yeah, but the trees will be better.
No, I know, but the trees-
The trees will help the neighbors out a little bit.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
You know, there's, there's a couple of these projects that I wanted to ask, is there any, uh, any asset to have a monitoring well or something?
Boy, you read my mind about the other one. I don't know if we can, I shouldn't say it that way.
I don't think this one would require a monitoring well.
It appears that nothing liquid is coming here. Or at least-
That's what his stated intention is.
Very, very, very minimal liquid.
Yeah.
Without anything liquid, I don't think we'll have it there.
The lane is very liquid.
Good point.
But there's only one open dumpster.
Well, it's right next to the river. Uh, it drains into the river.
Sure does.
With that two culverts right there, well, the water's going through those two culverts, you can always monitor by step right out of that too, right?
Well, not the same, but it may be better, I don't know.
I was kinda wondering if we're gonna put a little bit of silk sock around that culvert. You'd never really see it.
Just to catch debris?
Yeah. Sediment, whatever's gravel parking lot, he knows there's gonna be some sediment anywhere off, especially we got a 15-inch pipe heading right for it.
That culvert right next to that building here, is there a sump at all there before it goes into the culvert or is it just?
I don't remember, I'd have to go look at it. There definitely is none at 18-inch.
Yeah, it's not, the stuff is more likely to hit in the other one.
I'd have to look at it.
Now, you need to get Neil a chair.
Neil can stand.
He got a chair.
As you say, let's think about this a little bit. Anybody from the public sector speak? Saying none, close the public hearing. I didn't- I'm just, I just take a little silk sock around down to stop the sediment from coming in.
Around the 15-inch? Uh, the 18?
Or by the building.
The one that has, has the 476.5 hole around it.
Yeah, some hay bales and some silt fence.
I was thinking of silk sockets about this big.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Has the wood chips and things like that.
Right, right, right.
It won't be near as ugly, nobody will notice its air more than likely.
Right.
You're talking about a different culvert?
No, the one by the building.
The 15-inch culvert?
There's one under the, there's one that goes in front of the building, Frank put a piece of pipe in front of it.
I'm talking about the 18-inch under the road.
You were talking about two different culverts.
It's not the one with the lot one, it's the one by the building, under the road, the one that crosses the road, under the road.
But there is one closer to the building, so you're confused. The 18-inch culvert under the road, I know, yeah. Silk sock maybe at this 480 elevation?
Yeah.
Don't leave the stake.
Yeah, well, uh, okay.
I know, I know it's in the right order.
This is an existing building.
But, but not, uh- There's probably drainage coming, yeah, okay. So right around it.
Chuck just asked me a good question, proposed storage and waste station that is an existing building, correct?
Yes.
I thought so. Yeah, yeah.
How would that silk sock, sock work? It's just gonna stop. No, I know what, I know what it does, I just don't know where we're gonna put it from where.
Well, if you get, if you get a hole like this-
Yeah.
Thing is, you just put it right here, right around.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
If there's anything coming down, it's, doesn't-
Right, no, it's gonna-
Only about, only about eight inches.
Yeah, right, right.
Now, when the highway department comes to clean all that out, it'll be gone.
Right, exactly.
That's what I was thinking about.
It'll be there for, as long as it'll be there.
We're gonna have to replace it every spring anyway, they're not-
Yeah, I, I have no problem with that.
And maintain yearly. Look, take a look at it, see what condition it's in.
When you drive by, I mean, it's right there, you can see out the window when you drive by it, right?
I'm just saying that that's your, your question answer, well, how long will it be there? If you put yearly, then it's gonna be there for a long time.
It'll be replaced every October, I was up.
Well, to be- If you say maintain, it means keep one there, I would say. If it's not there, you gotta put one back, because that's the maintenance you gotta do.
So we got all the additions that appear to be made?
Well, I'm reading note three. To me, that doesn't really say what we've been talking about.
Can we reference this list with note three?
This March 23rd, 2017?
I would say this business is a scrap metal recycling center.
Yes.
And note three actually specifies iron, that's almost 180 degrees different than what the list specifies.
Full non-ferrous.
Well, there is at the very end, oh, some ferrous he's putting in there if he chooses to.
Very little.
Yeah.
Well, it's really not, I mean-
Saying what he's doing.
Yeah, but storing dump trucks and heavy equipment, I mean, that's really not the-
That's, that's not really, the business isn't storing dump trucks and heavy equipment. The business is a recycling center.
Right.
It should say right out, recycling non-ferrous metals, that's your primary thing.
Absolutely, positively, if I, we will have, you know, a truck, you know, an excavator there or a block cat or something.
But it's not a storage facility, right?
No.
These are your tools that you use in your-
These are the tools that use, we use to, for the-
That wouldn't even, that wouldn't even need to be referenced, would it? It's just a company vehicle.
I mean, the note should start off with primary purpose, which is recycling non-ferrous metals.
Well, recycling non-ferrous and ferrous metals, he's recycling everything.
Let's say barely is metal. Let's say barely as much.
As well as some ferrous metals such as steel, light iron, cast, castable rotors and drums.
I'd reference this list. There somehow. So it ties everything together so far.
Okay, so, uh.
So basically, we'll just.
So I should just scrap note three and say the.
I think it needs some serious rewording.
Yeah.
The way that's reading, you're gonna be storing dump trucks and heavy equipment, tractor trailers. And by the way, we're gonna be purging scrap iron.
Yeah. The recycling should be first. Yeah, that was my first note when we.
Right.
Oh, sorry, yes. That was a deep thought.
Where will the material that you take in be stored before it's sold?
In the building or in the trailer?
He told me people are gonna be coming in, dropping off their metal, he brings it into this waste station, weighs it, he pays them. Breaks it down in there and it gets stored in that container pod or the proposed, uh, excuse me. Well, some may be in the container pod, the dumpster for scrap metal and the box trailer for scrap metal. And then it gets carted away. How about batteries?
I wouldn't take batteries, there's always acid inside them.
Even if they were empty?
Yeah, batteries is just a nightmare, it's really, I mean.
You will be taking nothing containing liquids?
Nothing, 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 absolutely positive.
I think that should be on the.
Right, and I think I put, put that on something.
On the list you did.
Yeah, I, it's not worth the aggravation for me.
The concern would be that if you did take liquids and if they did spill.
Right.
We'd have a problem with some aquifers, so. If, if you're not planning to do that, I think.
Is that where an aquifer?
I'm sorry?
No, sorry, there's a river.
No, no.
It's not, not the aquifer, but.
So if, from my point of view, it'd be nice to ensure that there wasn't going to be any chance of chemicals going into the river. Into the groundwater, because you're quite near a wetland. The other question, Mr. Chairman, is, is this going to create a visual problem for the neighborhood?
I don't know.
Because he's going to have a lot of storage outside in containers.
Don't know if you were here when we talked about reseating the wetland buffer.
It was not.
No, I, I didn't mean that, I mean a visual barrier. A visual eyesore or.
Putting trees up.
We were gonna put like seven trees up in the wetland buffer.
Trees up here.
And what about along the road?
No, we didn't ask anything about that.
I mean, I could put a fence up, a gate, if that would work for people, I mean, that was something I was thinking about, but I didn't know whether.
I know that the river helps.
I agree, I'm not sure.
I think this guy.
I, I agree, I agree with you.
I think it's a market's yardage and in presentable condition.
That's coming up next, Neil.
I got, I have a note, you wanna hear? Kind of a note.
I would like to hear your note.
This business will be a recycling center for ferrous and nonferrous metals. No liquids will be accepted or stored.
Can reference the list?
Yeah, I would somehow reference the list.
For, after your metal, say per.
Refer to.
Or you would at the end of that say, per plan, or as per list dated March twenty third.
So the idea of.
A lot of things he doesn't have there. Somebody lost fifty, fifty one, seventy, seventy five.
He said that he can't imagine anything that's on the list.
I, I mean, I honestly, that list is pretty in-depth. I, 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 I mean. I, I. We don't think that's a lot of stuff in there.
He had on file in the land use.
Yeah, but what I was. There are a lot of grades of aluminum that you haven't mentioned, I, you know, it's too bad to say, well, fifty fifty one, I can't take it, or seventy seventy five, I can't take it. Uh, what I'm saying is, is. I'm sure that, I'm sure that you missed something that's gonna end up there, you're gonna wish you had it there.
Okay, how about referring to the general list?
I mean, let's say aluminum generally.
General list.
Yeah, aluminum's fine, but, but. You have aluminum listed, so I guess any aluminum that comes in, you're saying is good.
Right.
You're just having to list all these other things that under aluminum.
Examples of aluminum that he takes.
I, I was, yeah, exactly, I was trying to be, that's basically all I've ever seen. You know, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've never really seen.
Aluminum, then there's enough sense.
Well, most of the time, well, you have a gun that actually identifies it.
Exactly.
Just sixty sixty one or any?
Ah, any, it'll just tell you the alloy breakdown of it.
Okay.
Neil, again.
Sorry, yes, Neil.
On your list, you have clean radiators, dirty radiators, batteries. And are those contain liquids, including steel cased batteries?
Actually, the batteries, we should just take those off there, that's fine. The dirty, a dirty radiator means there's iron on it.
But what about the chemicals that are in it, the antifreeze and so forth?
That will be all drained. I'm sure, nobody's gonna give me a radiator that's fault, and most of the time it's all out, I wouldn't have to take that.
So you'll only take a drained radiator?
Yeah, absolutely. Take a car radiator, you take it out of your car, you've already, you know, drained it, you bring it to us. It's not like I'm taking a whole car in, you know, that's nothing that I wanna get involved in.
So you, you're not gonna take steel cased batteries?
No, we, we don't need to take those, I just put it as.
You see a lot of magnesium?
Uh, it's actually a pig metal, that's, most of the time, the only time people who have magnesium are people that like crushing plants. Because it's, uh, it, they put it in crushers and they're usually magnesium plates, they're probably like two, three tons at least. Not very often, and it's like a pig metal, it's more like a, um, magnesium is more like a, a, kind of like. Like a soft, dense metal that they crush rock with. Kind of a, like a ware plate.
Isn't magnesium have a ferocious burning capability? That's magnesium, right?
I don't know.
No?
I, I don't know, I mean, the only time we ever see, I've only seen magnesium is in crushing plants.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, magnesium, fine chips.
And that, you, you, that would only be from like an industrial plant, you know, or a, or a crushing plant you'd get that from.
So I think our list is gonna, right now, what I can see. Revised note three, what you said that I would include. As shown on the list dated March twenty third.
So we're gonna refer to the list?
Pardon?
We're gonna refer to that list?
Yeah.
Need to modify that list then to exclude the batteries.
On file at the land use department. And can the minutes please reflect that he is eliminating? Steel, steel encased batteries from the list.
And the batteries under miscellaneous nonferrous.
One third page.
Oh, I didn't see that one either.
Can we cross, can we cross? It should be clean, dry radiators. Dirty dry radiators.
Well, he has it then saying, nothing we've taken that have held chemicals or fluid unless completely drained. So. I think that, I think.
Yeah, we're okay.
The radiators are okay. Eliminate, we would read eliminate the two references, the batteries on that.
Absolutely.
On that same list, under the miscellaneous nonferrous, uh, under computer tower, just put the word refinery.
That refinery just means it's, it just, it, it just goes to refinery plant, they take it and they just, they melt it down.
What is it?
Yeah, you, you took it as something you would take in, what is it though, is it a product?
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's like a, it's like a computer type scrap, you know, it's like a, uh, let's say. If you had, you had one of those, those towers, the access around it, you know, with the, with the circuit board, little pieces of circuit.
Okay, the motherboard, the circuit, circuit board?
Circuitry stuff, that's all refinery stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
I take it that's an industry term then?
Yeah, pretty much.
Or is that something you made up?
No, it's refinery, it's okay, no, it's actually an industry term, I don't know.
I've never heard of that term, so, not in that use.
What ferrous metals would you not take? You know, as well as some ferrous metal.
Uh, let's say if somebody brought me a bulldozer, you know, I wouldn't take it, um, if it was, I, I, let's say somebody brought me. Like, let's say a snow blower or a lawnmower, that's stuff I really don't wanna get myself involved with, because you don't know if that's truly drained and that's kind of the stuff I don't wanna get involved with.
I suppose he had, suppose the bulldozer was cut up with a torch, so we can take that, wouldn't you?
I would, if it was cut up in pieces.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're.
I, I don't, I, we don't do a lot of heavy iron, I just put it down, you know.
Well, you got torchables there.
No, no, only my own, if something breaks. Which breaks every day.
Or can you read your proposed note one again, and hopefully she can get it in the minutes?
Three, no? Note three.
Oh, yeah.
This business will be a recycling center. For ferrous and nonferrous metals, no liquids will be accepted or stored on site.
Except for motor oil or diesel fuel for my trucks, I mean, that stuff like that.
Yeah, the stuff you're gonna use on my, yeah. I would add at the end of that. Such metals such as shown on the list dated March twenty third. Two thousand seventeen on file, Land Use Department.
There you go.
Revised list. Think, uh, such metals to include. Sorry, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Materials to include those listed.
To include are provided on the list dated March twenty third, two thousand seventeen. On file at the Land Use Department.
Is there a specific date on it?
Yes, March twenty third.
Oh, I'm sorry. On file, on file with who? Land, Land Use Department. Land.
So you're gonna move, remove the encroaching dumpster, or container pods. By June first.
Yep.
The sign is to be left in thirty two square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Non, no, no.
Get on the lip.
Non-lit.
Thirty two square feet per side.
Existing light is to be replaced with a motion detected downcast light and the proposed light's gonna be motion detected downcast. Lumen seed the wetland buffer.
Yep. That's there.
Also plant seven spruce and fir trees approximately thirty feet apart, middle of five feet high. And the silk sock around the, around the eighteen inch culvert under river road. Am I missing anything?
Certainly here, listen.
I think that was.
Yeah, the salt layers for the eighteen inch pipe.
Silk socks, like silk socks around that eighteen inch pipe to be maintained yearly.
I guess you mentioned the snow storage, right?
No, I did not. Can you put a note in the wetland buffer, no snow storage?
Yep, I have it, I already written there. No storage, no, no snow storage in buffer.
And you're gonna add some more snow storage up by the northern.
I'm gonna add some more snow storage.
Yeah, up by the, behind the proposed dumpster, basically.
Yep.
Yep, and probably increase by five feet back from that. Just, uh. Yep.
The only thing I can think of, do we wanna put a timeline on when he gets these trees planted in the wetland buffer? I didn't. Do you have to?
I'm gonna stick with June first. I do have to go look at him, but he should get him into the ground at an appropriate time, if he planted him now, they're gonna die.
Well, yeah, but if he plants them in a month, they're gonna be great.
Yeah, if he gets them by June first.
Yeah.
It'll be good.
What do you have to inspect?
Any later than that, they're not gonna make it.
Right.
I just have to see them there.
Okay.
And then I will periodically drive by and look at them to make sure that they are growing.
You can check for those trees on the container.
And I'll, and I'll, yep, and I'll check on the, the sock around the thing, I'll guarantee you that I'll pass that on to my successor a year from now.
Are you gonna keep the trees watered?
He's gonna keep the trees watered.
That's a successor job, I hear.
Yeah, that's my successor's job.
If you dig the hole deep enough and get enough roots, you're gonna be in the wetland, so it's gonna have enough water.
And there was an instance where someone planted some trees and intentionally did not remove the burlap sacks off the ball so that the trees died. Um, I would hope that that would not happen.
As long as my guys don't throw it over your prime.
Anybody think, if you don't agree on, I have a quick question, just promise. Very quiet.
I think we got it.
Does that mean you just made a motion to approve?
I'll say.
I don't, I don't have the list. I did not commit it to memory as you went along.
I'll make a motion to approve. With the following conditions. One note, three, it's revised to state. Please.
This business, you want me to read?
Yes.
This business will be a recycling center for ferrous and nonferrous metals, no liquids will be accepted or stored on site. Such as metals to include. Included on list dated March twenty third, twenty seventeen, on file with the land use department.
That works. Two, the encroaching container pods be removed by June first. Three, the sign will be less than thirty two square feet, drawn lit. Four, existing light will be replaced with a motion detected, motion sensor downcast light and the proposed one will be also motion detected downcast. Lumen seed the wetland buffer and plant seven spruce and fir trees, middle of five feet high by June first. Place silk socks around the inlet to the eighteen inch culvert. Off of the existing building. I want a note on the plan stating that, by the way. That the silk sock is to be maintained yearly.
Mm-hmm, I get that.
Add a note, no storage in the wetland buffer. And you're gonna add some more, last, I think, is no storage in the northern building.
More snow storage. Nine notes.
And trees that die need to be replaced in kind. The trees that you're planting along that buffer.
Let's have a second, then we can discuss it, you can change your motion.
I don't wanna change anything, just tell them to plant the damn trees.
You can't change your motion.
I know.
I have no say.
All right, I'll start. Yes, I was just, discussion. I'm gonna amend my buffer, my motion, my buffer here. You say that it has to maintain the trees?
That any any trees that die need to be replaced with living trees or...
Replace dead trees.
Yeah, replace dead trees.
I think everybody knows, but...
It doesn't do any good to have a tree there that's dead.
No, I just.
No, we can just revise.
Not yet.
No?
I accept I accept that revision, Bruce. Bruce, Bruce, Bruce suggested we put, make sure that.
And the trees be spaced thirty feet apart.
Oh, yes.
I have that.
You go to it, okay. And I'm great, I'm good with that. Revision. How about you, Mr. Jeff?
Yes, I'll, I'll. Second to amended.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Upstanding.
Thank you very much. I'll follow the rules.
I'll be down with a truckload of copper.
Nope, that's actually the the best grain they have.
Craig Francis.
You wanna keep that?
Yes, I do. And I wanna keep one of these. Since I have to have it.
Did Farmer officially withdraw?
Farmer officially withdrew.
I should've said something earlier.
You don't like it.
I apologize. First, you're unappointed.
Yep.
And Neil's sitting member now. I forgot, I apologize. I didn't mention, everybody, the Timothy Farmer wetland adjustment has been withdrawn. And the Francis Burl site plan has also been withdrawn. So those two items are not gonna be heard today.
With withdrawn or postponed?
Withdrawn. The Timothy Farmer wetland adjustment in Waterman Road and the Francis and Nancy Burl site plan at the corner of Rockland and Route seventy-seven, both have been withdrawn.
Withdrawn until the Mylars are filed and then will be re-notified.
They will be, people will be re-notified if another application gets submitted, it'll be re-notified. Okay? Withdrawn. You will get another notice if anything gets resubmitted. Okay?
Which one's got withdrawn?
This.
Note for Frank Burl's.
Yes.
That's gotten withdrawn.
Yes.
For the moment.
For the moment.
Yes.
So we will not be speaking about that? When's the continuation on that? Is it being spoken upon again?
It's been withdrawn. So they're gonna be, they're gonna be resubmitting and re- and re-notifying.
You'll be re-notified when the hearing is gonna be.
So we're not speaking about that at all tonight?
Nope.
There's nothing to speak of?
Nope. We have no application.
And that is noted on the, uh, agenda on the door.
Oh, really?
If anyone read it.
I'm sorry, I should've said something earlier.
That's all right.
I apologize.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question on the Burl property.
Application's been withdrawn. We don't have anything to discuss.
Well, he's cutting down a road that's shown on that site plan. They're already cutting trees down. My understanding is he's not gonna do that.
There's an intent to cut that's been filed. He's legally cutting the trees.
He has an intent to cut, he's fine.
He's run his own property?
Yep.
But isn't that for the future road that hasn't been moved?
Could be, could be. If you had that many trees and you wanted to whack them down and turn them into toothpicks, you could do it.
So the gentleman that's doing the cutting, though, is not Frank Burl that owns the property. It's actually Remala.
No, it was actually, um...
We really should be talking about this.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't matter who's cutting it down. It can be me.
Yeah, it's Frank's land, Frank's cut.
Frank Frank's land right now, I guess.
That's who signed the intent to cut.
Okay. You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the show if you'd like. Thanks for your time, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks.
That was good. Should've said something earlier.
They don't want it anywhere near you.
The next item on the agenda is continuation of a site plan for Martin O'Brien doing businesses as H two O waste disposal.
He's Mike Dolber. Chuck Bowler. And Bruce Fillmore. Bruce has got the green shirt, yeah. And Tom Close, the one next to him.
I knew Tom.
And Neil Kirk.
Neil Kirk, yep.
Who's giving us back liquor money and John Van Rutten through the secondary.
John Van Rutten.
The longest last name for this guy?
Mr. Dolber. I don't I don't have any new plans to offer. All I had was a couple of minor note changes to the plan work. I believe you and Mr. O'Brien went on a sidewalk.
Yes, we did.
Relatively fruitful for both parties. So I guess if you have any questions to ask him about that or the process, I don't think there are any any plan issues. I think it's a process on site. On how he's gonna store the dumpsters and clean them and what he does inside, so.
Which probably will mean a lot of notes in your plan.
We can add a sheet, too, if you wanna put in a note document. Somebody just needs to tell me what I need to write down.
Okay. You're right, there's a, the plan doesn't, nothing's changed. That would happen, have one, but that's all right.
The only thing, uh, the only item I really changed or added to the plan was the dumpster storage area that we talked about. At the last meeting, where we were still the dumpsters, and I have those properly sized, I think, two of each, the big ones, medium and the small ones. Which it's just a postage stamp on the on the plan itself. So I I think all the questions are about process.
Okay.
With that, I'll just sit down and let you fire away at Mr. O'Brien.
Good evening, boys, chairman.
So first of all, at the sidewalk, we noticed the, uh, floor drains were sealed, were plugged, or was used wrongly. And it appeared that most of the floor drained to where the floor drains used to be, the plug floor drain. So limited water would get out of the building at one time, so. If there was any liquid that's on the floor, it's gonna flow towards the northern floor, so you can clean it up, but it's not, it's not here. Did you bring that little handy book that I gave you? That they were kind enough to give us, a whole bunch of? It is on the dashboard of my truck as we speak.
No.
That I forgot.
I don't think I have the handy little book.
Yes, you too. I gave two of them.
I've got all the handouts from the sidewalk. That's what you're looking for.
That's the one thing. You were gonna put a spill block underneath the doors.
Correct, yep.
And you were going to seal the floors, and you agreed to seal up the up the wall a little bit.
Correct, yep.
An inch or two, whatever.
Yep.
Doesn't matter, an inch would be fine, sure. You were gonna use some speedy dry, of course, to clean up any any spills, which is also outlined in this pamphlet. The one thing I thought of after the sidewalk, I actually just thought of it the other day. This is over in October. We've had, you know, this can build out for a long time, but we do seem to keep getting those abuse site standards. I've been on the board, I could pick a five real quick, like. Cutman was in, I was in. Mark Mulch Guy. You, Merrill was in. Brown might have been in his place at that time, I think.
Murray was in.
Yeah, Murray, yep.
Yeah, Murray. In most of these places.
And Fornier.
Fornier.
Landscaping business down at the end.
Most of these properties have an old dug well that probably isn't being used anymore. I know you, whoever the owner is, mentioned one in the back of this property, just a back of pavement. It would be, I think, in the town's best interest to somehow monitor these wells. We can't go asking everybody else right now, and I don't know what tests to run, because I just thought of this two days ago. Luckily, we have the chairman of the Conservation Commission, happens to work in DES, and should be able to tell us real quick, like, what tests we should be running. But that's the only, that's the one thing I can think of that we should probably do, and if we get any more site plans on B and B Lane, do the same thing. I mean, the one well was contaminated by salt that somebody mentioned.
Tannin.
And having it, yeah, and they re-grilled it, drilled a new one. Any, either, either way, there's wells out there that can be monitored. We don't need to spend, have you spend the money to drill a well. And Mr. Dolber already stuck up his hand, but he said he wasn't saying anything. But...
I didn't say that.
But there are a lot of, there are a lot of...
The well that was drilled is his.
Yes.
The dug well that was contaminated was his.
If, if I may.
But there are, there are a lot of wells out there that we could be monitoring, is what, is my point, without spending a lot of money drilling new wells.
The point of the monitoring well would be to tell what is new in that well. So it would require a test of the existing well, which was contaminated with tannin. So if the well came back with something other than tannin in it, but you need, you would need to get a baseline study done of the well that's there. So that you know how much bad stuff is in it. And I, there may have been a test done, uh, and Mike could verify this, but any part of, any part of this process would, I would think, on your behalf, would be to test that well and find out what's in it. So that anything that knew went in it, you would be able to tell.
That's my sky.
Right, but my point is, I mean, your map shows one on the, you're putting property yourself, no? On Murray's property. No, we can't force Murray to let us go test this well, but if Murray can back in for a site plan, hopefully somebody remembers.
I spoke to my bank today, and, um, on behalf of them, they said that they already know that there's been contaminants on that property with the well that we were just speaking about. And they're gonna, they have to do their guidelines to reexamine that, make sure that the property I am buying is not contaminated. Because if it is, then I'm not gonna wanna push it.
Well, your new well would not be contaminated, but the old one, I'm sure, is.
The old one may be. The new one may be, we don't know.
Well, the old one was dug.
Right.
And, um, there's a perched water table in there. They scraped, they scraped every yard of ground they could off of that. And in that area, it's probably a two-foot season hot water table that's perched on top of a hardpan. That's why that well got contaminated, because dug, and everything on the surface leaches right into it. Had been, uh, by Mr. Merrill and everything went on site thirty years prior to, um, the current owner occupying. I wouldn't be testing that dug well. I'd be testing the new drill well. And I don't know if we need to mon, drill a monitoring well per se.
No, I'm saying we don't, I'm saying we don't need to drill a monitoring well. We can use existing well. I mean, there's a lot of wells in there.
Oh, yeah. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that existing dug well just go and test this new drill well.
Well, if there's any change, we're not gonna hold them responsible for the dug well, because they haven't got in there yet. But if there's a change in the dug well, that would, that would, uh, show eventually.
Well, everything's running downhill. His site runs onto Murray's. Um, Haynes no longer runs onto this site because of the dug rail and the treatment rail that was installed for a, for that site plan approval. I don't think that that dug well's not gonna tell you much.
I don't know, but I hope you're right.
Well, I would think it would be who him to test his water that he's gonna drink. I would. In fact, I don't think I would drink any water in any wells in that industrial park. I drink bottled water myself, but... So we're not talking about drilling a new monitoring well?
No.
We're talking about just testing this water up there.
I'm thinking quarterly, I'm I'm thinking quarterly or something like that. Sorry, quarterly or something like that.
Would you, if you established a, a baseline of the contaminants that were already in it, it should be a, not exactly a scientific, but a down and dirty method of telling if anything bad was leaching into the water.
Well, how, I mean, how, how long did that go on?
Forever.
Twenty-five, fifty, I was like, I don't know, forever.
What's a, what's a, what's a, what a test called?
I don't know the, I don't, I don't know what tests to run at this point. So I said I would talk to somebody. As you know, I'm a land surveyor. I don't know anything about quality of water.
Well, I can, I can get a sample, sample of the water and bring it down to the wastewater treatment plant in Norfolk and make it tested and let me know exactly what's, what's in it as we speak.
Yes, Neil.
Thank you. Gregory, what's the point of testing? Let's assume that the tests are done and they show an increase in pollutants. Let's assume that they're not leaching off somebody else's site, but they're a result of this folk, this man's operation. What's the consequence?
Cease and desist.
So there would have to be something in here that says you cannot increase the pollution above the levels, et cetera.
I think the general public's health and safety of the public is covered by zoning laws, isn't it?
Well, I don't know that there's anything in there that deals with maintenance and post-approval, um, requirements. So unless there's going to be a consequence to doing the testing, why, why do the testing?
I think there's always a consequence, isn't there, Neil?
I don't know, but...
Well, I mean, once the, the... My understanding is, I've had some wells tested, the state of New Hampshire takes note, and there's somebody or they're responsible. I don't know if they ever do anything. But it's certainly, I think they do pursue contaminants.
I don't know if that's the case. Maybe that's, that's the answer, but there's no point in doing a requirement unless we understand what the consequences will be if additional pollution is found.
I I don't have a solution right now. I'm just mentioning that I think it would be a good idea to do something like that.
If I can, real quick, you mentioned at the sidewalk that you have to be, uh, registered with the DES Solid Waste Division.
Correct.
And let's go through rigorous inspection on annual base, annual basis to maintain your license.
Compliance, yep. You're being compliant.
What, what do they test? Do they test your water?
Well, they're coming into a complete sidewalk of the building, see the operations and know it's being processed. If it, if, if this was an outside operation, you would have stormwater. DES would be more intense involved. But since it's in an inside, and it's being handled inside, and it's not an outside operation, uh, the compliance is a little bit lower. But if stuff was leaching out, they would get in on it. And if it's something like this gentleman says about stuff leaking into the ground, then EPA would get involved, and it would become EPA's site. So there are rules and regulations and laws.
Because one of the concerns that was brought up, um, and we haven't discussed it yet, was the storage of the open top containers outside.
Correct. I did, I did talk to DES. I talked to a few folks up there, Melanie and Paul. They had no concerns with the open top containers being outside whatsoever, long stare emptied. They had no problems. If they're a fall, sitting there for numerous non-of days, then there would be some, again, compliance.
But I think the concern of at least a few members of the board, including myself, is you, you can clean them out best you want, but once you start getting rainwater in them, you lift them up on that, on that roll-off, all the water's gonna drain out of it. It's gonna go in the ground. That's a concern.
Yeah, but it should be, you know, it ain't gonna, it shouldn't be a contaminated water. It's just regular rainwater, like the rain buckets.
It just washes off whatever's on the sides and on the boards.
Yeah.
And that's a, that was, that's a concern of at least mine.
Right.
Is you, you bring in these, you bring in these trailers, you drop them off at construction sites, remodels, house cleanouts, things like that. You get some person decides to throw some trash in there. You get some person decides to throw some trash in there, some households with trash in there. They throw, they throw bucket of paint in there or something like that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that happens.
It does, and that would be our job, to make sure that that paint is absorbed up and taken out. Before it's put back out on the.
So it'd have to be completely dried up and.
Correct, yeah.
That's, I mean, it seems almost impossible to get them to the point where the rainwater would loosen whatever is left in there on the sides or on the bottom that can't be physically taken out as dry water. That was, I think, the main point of discussion down there when we had the site walk was how can you contain that, how can you keep that rainwater from loosening the inside and then, as John just said, when you move the dumpster, it's gonna drain onto the ground, rainwater's definitely gonna drain onto the ground, and anything that's in it will go onto the ground. That was our concern, and that's why we talked about a void barn or something so the water would never get into them when they're outside. They would maintain, they'd maintain dry until you take them out and use them. But that, again, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, that was my concern when we did the site walk. And really, inside, we had a similar concern, but you've got control over all of that.
Correct, yeah.
With your materials to dry, the speedy dry and everything. So you've got total control on the inside with the bumpers you're gonna use there, the door. But that piece outside, water collecting in those and then coming out when they're moved, was a concern that I had, we discussed it.
Right, and again, the best we can do is, as we, like we explained, and we get the socks that we're to put in the dumpster as well, which will help absorb rainwater. And if need be, we can bring the container back in, the sock's gonna absorb it, pull the sock off, and process the sock. That will help absorb rainwater. But we're gonna make sure the containers are completely cleaned out, wiped out.
I mean, steam cleaning would probably be the only way that would assure, well, sure to sure, that they're really clean. And I don't imagine you wanna go through that process.
No, I do not.
If you, if you guys would do a site walk and came down to our facility now, believe me, the equipment is nice, it's clean, you're not gonna see junky paint all over everything.
I don't think anybody here is worried about that, it's the, at least for me, it's you having a used dumpster that's going outside that had debris, trash, chemicals, who knows what in there. You clean it out the best you can, but you're not gonna get a spotless. And you're gonna have rainwater with contaminants pouring out of it when you lift it on the roll-off. I'd like to see a way to try to at, at least control that the best that's possible.
Even, even just sitting outside and you get eighteen inches of snow over a lake, and all of a sudden you pick it up and the snow dumps out, and the snow's gonna drag everything up the dumpster with, right with it. Doesn't even get, get the same problem, whether it's rain or snow, it's the same issue.
Hey, I, I, I don't doubt that you're gonna clean it out the best you can, but you're, you're not gonna get a spotless to the point where all that's coming out.
No, we're gonna do the best we can, we're gonna do the best we can as far as cleaning.
Exactly.
Greg?
Yes.
What about odor? August.
Odor, we have an odor MSD sheet that, the odor, it's just the thing that we sprinkle on, keep the odor control down. I don't know if they have that one here.
No, I, I understand that, tell me if I'm wrong, anything stored outside is going to have no trash, no garbage in it.
It'll be empty, completely empty.
They're totally empty.
Totally empty.
Any garbage, trash is stored, if you, to the extent you store it, it's gonna be stored inside.
Inside, yeah.
I don't know much about that building, but is it possible that some neighbors, and I know they're commercial operation, but still, there are people there, that they're gonna say, this place really smells?
I don't think we're gonna have that problem, for one, my office is gonna be right there, and I'm not gonna wanna smell that. So in the, in today's technology, names, data sheets, there's so many different ways to control that, the odors.
How long is the, the refuge gonna stay inside of the building?
Not long, I'm trying, I'm gonna get baled up, processed and shipped out. I would say, I don't know, forty hours or so, you know, as far as that stuff.
So the longest anything will be there will be approximately.
If there's MSW, it'd probably be about forty, forty-eight, seventy-two.
Okay.
As far as the recycling products and that, I have to, it's when you're baling cardboard or paper or plastics, it's more intensified. So it takes a lot of material to make a bale, and I have to have a certain amount of bales to ship. So some of this, right, to make worthwhile the shift, sell the product.
The milk jugs, those are going to cause, I think, one of the most.
Yeah, those milk jugs, yeah, milk jugs can get a little watery.
And that's gonna take a while. I've actually, I actually work part-time at a transfer station in Naperville Town. And during the summer, they bail them, just like you're describing. They, they compact it down, they leave it down overnight to try to get it pressed. But it's gonna take them, it takes them quite a while, and that's a transfer.
Right, that's probably sitting outside too, right?
No, it's, it's inside the building.
Inside of a building.
But it still has a odor to it.
Right.
How long is your plastics gonna stay outside when they just they, it's gonna take a while for you to, to have a truckload, I would imagine.
Yeah, it's gonna take me about eight bales, roughly.
Eight bales, and how long does it take to, to create a bale is probably.
It's gonna depend on the, the volume that's coming in, I mean, I might be able to create eight bales in five days. Or it could be less, or it could be longer.
Okay.
It's the volume that's coming in, I hope it's gonna be short. Eight bales in two days would be great.
But these bales are gonna be stored inside the building.
Correct, until I get an order, enough to ship all, yeah.
My concern, though, is the doors are gonna be open, because it's hotter than the blazing, you know what, down there during, during August.
Yeah, okay.
That takes to build a dumpster, but that doesn't address the, the plastic that's inside the, inside the the bailing.
Well, I'm in a solid waste facility in Milford, and we use this chemical, and I'll tell you, it makes a huge difference in our building, huge.
Take a half a cup and just spray it.
Oh, it's easy, on the trash, it's easy.
On the plastic, the containers too?
We, we do it on, like, around the flooring, anything, like, we, like, we have a sorting line, so at the front, at the back end of it, we have like a a hopper where all the trash goes into, that, that you get through the recycling that you don't take, it's a contaminant. We just sprinkle it on there, it makes the whole building just, inside, the doors closed to get rid of the smell.
But you're not taking any, trying to distinguish between garbage and trash. You're not taking any garbage, which is decaying food and things like this, or do you take that?
That's gonna be part of the process, yes, it will be garbage, trash, which is MSW. And that's the stuff that will be getting shipped out fairly quickly.
And where does that go?
Uh, it's gonna go up the wheel elevator in Penchak or, Penchak, excuse me.
But not to the wear truck?
No, unless you have cheap tipping fee rates.
Nope. Wheel elevator is a waste, those are awesome places to make that stuff.
It's incinerate energy, so it's a good thing.
I, I think we need to do something to protect the aquifer from whatever water is going into the storage containers outside. Are the way to do that, but.
It was, it was discussed at the site walk amongst the board members that attended, possibly a hole bar would be a good idea.
So that any, any storage outside would be under a roof?
Under a roof, yeah. I don't know if the, if that's still a consensus, I thought it was a great idea.
It's his idea, he got, no, he has to come up with an idea, we don't come up with ideas, he does the ideas, those guys.
Okay.
We don't design it for him, we can make suggestions, and he can do whatever he wants to. And we can do whatever we want to. So it sounds like the board is still somewhat concerned about the odor, maybe no more than somewhat. The board is still concerned, is concerned about the open-top storage. Personally, I'd like to see somehow to do some monitoring out there. Long, long term, on the whole site, I mean, the whole industrial park, gotta start someplace.
Where's your facility now?
It's in the town of Milford. Yeah, and I operate outside, in open tops, with everything.
What's your, what's your hours?
Excuse me?
Your sorting isn't done indoors?
Right now, we do everything single stream, so my guys come back and we sort through off the trucks into these open-top containers. So we have one for like trash, and we got one for single stream recycling. And by me bringing it inside gives me more of a capability of sorting that product out into the individual parts, I can resell it versus paying to get rid of it. Now, we haul it down into Massachusetts, and we're paying an substantial rate to get rid of recycling. Recycling rates are going right through the roof, four years ago, I was getting paid money to take them, now we're paying to get rid of them. Which, again, affects us, the consumers, you know.
What, what's your hours in Milford?
Uh, we, my guys operate around six-thirty, seven o'clock start time, and the office shuts down at four-thirty. I have the office on the Milford Oval, and our sites is over at Soil and Farm.
What kind of sites, what kind of sites shut down?
Um, typically whenever the guys get done, between one-thirty and two-thirty.
So in other words, if I showed up there at seven o'clock some morning, you'd be able to show me around a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
I can't say one yet. It's not gonna be tomorrow, I'll tell you that much. We, I assume we have contact information form, email, phone number, something?
Let me look.
We have to, we have to fill the application.
I guess my question to the board would, when do you think we'd have a decision? Just, the reason why I ask this is, is I am a buyer, we have a seller. And trying to be fair to the seller, as well as me being a buyer. I'm sure he's got a timeframe that he's sitting on, as well as myself, as far as looking at properties, and different properties. And again, like I said, I have spoken to DES, all, all the concerns and compliances. And, again, I guess they're in compliance, so.
Are you sure the bank was doing some investigating?
I, I'm gonna have a, a result from them April seventh. And that's got to do with, from the prior owners having problems with their wells and so forth. And that's something I personally told them I needed them to check up. I don't wanna buy a piece of land that's contaminated. Like the other gentleman said, and be responsible for it, you know, two years down the road, next thing you know, I got a two-point-five million EPA site on my hands. You know? So I guess what I'm asking the board that, I, I I don't wanna say put anybody on the spot, because I'm not, but I, I need a decision. Sooner the better, I guess, you know, so I can.
Nothing personal, we don't enjoy seeing you every month here.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I, I feel, you know, like, I'm, I, you know, trying to go through all this with you guys, and I'm.
I know, and I appreciate. I appreciate everything, I mean, we got, we basically have three issues, right? Monitoring, the odor, and the open-top containers.
Okay, yeah.
Is that a true statement for everybody here?
I'm not so concerned about the odor, because I've.
I'm not either, he's the one that has to live with it.
Yeah, and I've, I'd be more worried about other sites, other properties on that, in that complex for the odor. But.
So then you are worried about the odor.
Not from their site, no, they the plan that, the, the plan that this young lady was telling us all makes sense, from what I've seen working at transfer stations. They're doing everything they can within their power. As long as they're moving the product off of the site in a timely manner, then that's great. My biggest concern is, is the water runoff.
I, I agree with that, I would put the odor low on the list, quite pretty soon.
And it's the recycling center's gonna have a stance to it. Nothing we can do about that.
Industrial parks aren't as best smelling places anyway.
Yeah.
You had your hand up, Mr. Dolberg?
Well, if, if he's willing to put up a, a hole barn that would cover the dumpsters, we can show it on the plan, and, and to to address the concerns the board has of the aquifer and the percentage of coverage that we have now, I would just show an equal area to be long-enceded, maintained, on, on, on site. You know, to the board's satisfaction, but, you know, help move it forward, if he's willing to do the hole barn to cover the dumpsters, which, you know, that, that's, that's his, his to break to. We can show it on the plan, we have plenty of space, we have room for, for the trucks. Just do it with the caveat of, of showing equal area, or we can, a larger area for long-encied, already towards the front of the property.
No, I mean, the board is allowed to do that, as long as you don't increase.
As long as we don't increase, and that's.
Increase impervious.
It's not a problem for us to show it.
All you have, all you have to do is have the roof drain, go into a beachy cat's space, or a pooper's solved anyway, but, yeah.
So, um, but on the front part of the property, knowing the way it works, the roof drain is not gonna work. The water table is deeper towards the back of the property, the way it goes. So we can show that and do it. We don't have any setback issues, we wouldn't have any coverage issues. I guess the only issue would be what you wanna do for the water testing. And I think his process to clean the dumpsters and, and how he's described it, pretty much is, is not an issue at that point.
Well, a hole barn would help along with the water testing too.
That was a, a hole barn helped the water testing.
Well, because now you've got a lot less chance that the water's gonna get contaminated.
I agree, but no, nothing personal to you, but I think we need to set up some kind of monitoring on the whole park. Not just.
The line, right, right.
The next guy comes in, do whatever they are in that park, on the aquifer.
But if you do that, Craig, what you're really saying is you wanna hold him responsible for an increase in pollution in the aquifer.
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Well, the shallow well isn't gonna be in the aquifer either, it's not, it's gonna be deep enough.
No, I, I, I honestly, as a resident, I only live a mile away, I hear everything in the mornings, I hear everything that goes on the park. There's this power line that runs through the park right next to my house, well, not right next to my house, but I think if you wanna do monitoring, then you need to put it in the order. Either, and, and belt and suspenders, put it into the aquifer protection, change your site, and your site plan regs, change use. That way, whatever comes in, you can, you can enforce that. I'm not really sure that you can enforce that now. If you, as far as you're voluntary, in a agreement between the applicant and the board.
I think we could under, under public health and safety. I've had clients have to do it in other places where there wasn't anything in the order.
We really beat this gentleman's benefit too, especially initially, while he's already said he's gonna do this anyway. But.
Well, I, I, I think that quarterly testing is probably a bit much, because I think that can get very pricey for organics and stuff like that.
I don't, I don't have any idea what the test for, personally.
I think that you would wanna do with the initial test. I would imagine that the water test that the bank is gonna do would be fairly comprehensive, level-two environmental study.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, I'm gonna suppose to have it, April seventh.
That's your baseline.
Right.
And if you get a copy of that, everybody?
I'm open to suggestions, I just thought of this two days ago.
Once a year, I don't think once a year is unreasonable, as long as everybody else, whoever comes back in for a change of use, is enforced for everybody. And we're just looking for fairness, like.
Paris, with my own store, we had to do testing because we had a deli in the store. They did bacteria testing, we had to do every six months, chemical testing only once a year.
Oh, wow, deep okay.
So I, I agree.
Do you remember the cost on that, Tom?
Well, bacteria testing is very cheap, it's done by the state. When you got, the chemical was, wasn't very much either, because it was confined to just a couple of things.
Yes, right.
Here, we're talking about something probably more broad, because you, you don't know what you're looking for.
Right.
Whereas, I forgot what it is now, but to you.
I would imagine the initial test would be fairly broad, and probably fairly expensive that the bank would undertake, which would identify, you know, volatile organics and heavy metals and, and the like. And then, I guess, whatever presence of that is shown, that's what you would wanna test for later. You could, you mean, you could take the first one and then narrow it down. I guess, I don't know how that works. I would guess that Jeremy Fulton of Concom would be.
I, I think so, yes.
He's having some lights to pressure going.
Yes.
That's his daily life, so. Is there any way that we could?
I was gonna suggest that, I don't know about the rest of the board, I, I work in Manchester. Obviously, I live in Ware, it doesn't take me long to get from Ware, Ware to Milford. Give you a call or email or something, say, hey, is it okay if I swing by tomorrow morning? Because I'm not gonna know until three o'clock in the afternoon if I can do it or not, to be honest, we're swamped right now.
Right.
And that's, that's the only way I could do it, is say, three o'clock, say, is it okay if I swing by tomorrow morning? And run down, take a look at your facility, just fifteen minutes, I don't want, I don't wanna have. And run down, take a look at your facility, just fifteen minutes, I don't want a half hour tour to you, but I don't have time for it.
You're gonna get like a five minute tour.
Five minutes is better yet.
I got an office trailer out there about, I don't know, eight feet wide, twelve feet long, and my guys operate on it.
I don't want coffee and donuts, I don't want any of that, just keep me going. I personally wanna see it, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm just, I don't have time to schedule a certain, to be honest, I can't certain, schedule a time for seven o'clock in the morning. I can schedule a time, not a date.
Residential homes around your facility?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's actually, I actually, that's an EPA site where I'm at.
Oh, you're right across from Hitchcock?
No, we're on the other side of the river.
Oh, yeah, was it down on the paint?
Trombley Pond.
Yeah.
Oh, right, Trombley, yeah.
Where?
Some River Road, I think that's River Road?
Yeah, yeah, River Road, yeah. Sunny, sunny period.
Which one's River Road?
You know where the fish hatchery is?
Yes.
That's River Road.
Yep, just before that.
The Sunny Prairie Pond.
Well, you know, another thing that might be worthwhile, I mean, so many times I, I wouldn't give you the name what the issues were, but we have a, a town does something, they hire somebody, they have a company come in, and all in the hole, we find out six or eight months later that wherever they came from, there was all kinds of issues. I mean, would it pay to, uh...
Yes, I was gonna get a hold of the Milford planner in case.
I mean, you've already stated there are always issues, but...
Trust but verify.
I'll tell you this, the town of Milford has a very comprehensive training staff.
Yeah?
They have, they have...
Four times the size of Ware's.
They do, they do.
Bigger than four.
They probably have a budget too.
They have, they have a very professional staff.
Yes, they do.
If you call up, they'll be able to put their fingers right on what you're looking for.
Craig, just let me know what they've got all programmed in, okay?
Okay.
And our only request would be, can we meet again in two weeks?
I was gonna say, you think about the pole barn, we'll think about...
I guess my question with the pole barn, how big can you go? I mean, I could start off with two bays, two bays deep and end up bigger than a football field, I mean...
How big do you need?
That's what I'm, I mean, how big would be big enough to satisfy the board?
So all your containers underneath it? So all your containers underneath it?
Then, I wouldn't be able to do a pole barn, it'd be too big, you'd get thirty, thirty open top containers.
That's what I was looking back here.
You can't stack them?
No, no.
I was looking back here and I saw your dumpsters are eight by fourteen, you store ten to twelve dumpsters, I think, wow, that's a big pole barn.
Yeah. And I got thirty of them, and I'm growing, and I don't see all of them being there at any given time, only during the winter months when it's, you know, Christmas, New Year's. But during the busy season like right now, I think that...
Can you come up with an idea of how many dirty ones you might have on site at a time?
Shrink wrap them in the fall, act like a boat.
I could do that, maybe shrink, maybe I can put shrink wrap over the tops of my empty home.
If you're gonna be there all winter, why not?
If you only have like six in the yard at a time, because all the rest are over on the site?
Yeah.
Kinda come up with something to, I mean, that's...
Would the board be willing to do that? I mean, I could do a, shrink wraps a good idea.
And then actually you have to be recycled afterwards.
I could put a two by, two by four in the center, and we can shrink wrap it up when we're not using it.
For the warmups, right.
And we want to pull it, we just pull the shrink wrap off and recycle it.
As long as, as long as it protects, protects the inside from getting wet or snow, but I'd be fine with that. But that's all I care about is getting, is...
Yeah, that I can do, and that's cost effective and it's recyclable and...
So what we're saying is, a dirty container comes in, and you're gonna let it go out rented maybe in two or three days, so you're gonna shrink wrap it, I don't know how long it takes.
Right, we're gonna bring it in, dump it out, sweep room and clean it up, and then shrink wrap it.
Because you're gonna put it out, it's gonna be there overnight.
We shrink wrap it up.
Even though the next day you're gonna take it off and send it out.
Yeah.
And most people keep them a lot of times for two weeks, so...
Well, the container is their site.
Right, but the point is you have yours, some of them are on your site for a number of weeks.
That's what I could do, that would be easy enough to do, actually, that's a good idea.
So we got three issues? Two of them are us, two of them are me at least. I'm gonna talk to Andy Fulton, Conservation Commission Chairman, he works at DES. I'll email him tonight about testing, hopefully I can have a telephone conversation with him sometime.
Yeah.
Give him my idea and get his input into the whole thing. I don't know what's gonna come of it. I'll try to come down and see you, like I said, I don't know when. And you come up with a shrink wrap pole barn slash combination thereof idea. I think that's our three issues, isn't it?
So what, what is a reasonable time? Like yesterday would have been great. Right.
Thirteenth will be our next meeting.
Yeah, if the bank comes back and says, hey, that's, it's dirty, then I'm gonna...
Then you're walking away.
I'm walking away, see you later.
But it could be sooner than that.
It could, but they told me today, because I was on the phone with them today, back and forth emailing, that April seventh they're gonna have the results, so...
So they have the results April seventh, and we have a planning meeting on the thirteenth, would be okay with you?
That would work, yeah. I mean, I'm guessing, I don't know, if any, we'd have to get along with the seller as well, but I don't have a problem with that part.
One thing I did not do, does anybody in the public wanna speak? Come to the podium, please?
No, 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 it has to do with, actually Mike said something.
You have to come to the podium and state your name, we have a new recording secretary, ma'am.
Since when, you didn't have anybody sign in last time? But we're gonna be proper...
Yes, we did, you just didn't do it.
No, we didn't.
Yes, you did.
We did not.
Yes, you did.
I'm a neighbor.
Ma'am, if you keep backing this way, I'm gonna kick you out.
Please do, please do. You just said something before about not drinking any.
You didn't tell us your name.
I did say it, as he was chastising me, and I went through, she did.
She did.
Nancy, come on, sorry.
I apologize.
Mike said something about not drinking any of the water in any of the industrial park.
Well, that's my, that's my personal opinion as a resident of Ware.
And I'm saying as a resident of Ware, also a neighbor, and excuse me, I was here at the board when another individual came to store vehicles to have a business in the industrial park, and I was laughed at when I showed a concern over an aquifer pertaining to their oil business. So I applaud the board for saying, hey, we have to start somewhere, thank you. My concern is what Mike had just said about none of, he wouldn't drink any of the water from whatever, and we're all over an aquifer. I'm a little concerned now about the aquifer now from the contaminated Merrill property and other, and should we all get our water tested? Probably not an answer you wanna say yes to, because that who's paying for it? But now I'm getting a little concerned listening to and everything else going into the industrial park.
What you might wanna do is wait till April ninth and talk to that gentleman.
Well, well, which brings, which begs to be, if they bag out, can we get a copy from your bank on if it's a contaminated site, so we know for the industrial park?
No, no, we're paying dearly for all this.
Okay, then if you bag out, it's because of that, great.
You said you were gonna make it, you were gonna give us a copy of the well test.
Yeah. Okay, because that's now then gonna be the concern for current owner and everybody around.
The problem with everybody around is that for starters, you need to have your well tested to establish a baseline of what is and is not in your well, and then continually monitor your well to find out if there is any further contamination before you can accuse someone of polluting your well.
And that's fine.
And then it's kinda hard to figure out where the water came from that got in your well also.
So the problem with your concern is, it is a legitimate concern, however, it is something that you have to initiate on your nickel.
That's fine, because I'm drinking gallons of water a day.
Bruce, get your water tested.
Had two wells drilled, didn't you ever?
Yeah, yeah, everybody has wells. Just a concern, now that I'm hearing that test contamination at the industrial park, if they're concerned about their site because of the well, then I'm asking the board how many other sites at the industrial park?
I don't, I think you're slightly confused, I don't think they are concerned, I think it's a...
The bank?
Yeah, it's a federal policy of some sort with the bank.
It's all about compliance.
It doesn't matter if he was in the industrial park or if he was in Pittsburgh, New Hampshire, we're probably gonna do the same well test. Doesn't matter where they are.
And I just heard what Mike said in the second well.
Yeah, but he said it as a personal, that's his personal opinion about drinking water down there. I could say I don't drink water down there, I live in Bradford.
I don't drink Bradford water either.
So, there you go.
Yeah, the conversation's going hell in a handbag, okay, never mind.
Thank you, ma'am, we will try, we will try to keep on top of monitoring the industrial park. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
May I more so continue till the thirteenth?
Is that the right date, thirteenth?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Discussion?
Is the thirteenth working, you guys?
Yeah, we'll fly out with a decision on the thirteenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, fifteen. If you could do me one favor, can I rearrange your cell number or something down, I don't see it on the card. I've got a card, but it's no cell number.
Yeah, the cell number should be right there, please.
Oh, that's a cell number?
Yeah.
Yep, so, yep, that's it.
Good enough.
That's it.
It doesn't say cell, it just says a number.
Yeah, you can reach me around that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, boy.
Thank you. Thank you.
The place better be good, Craig.
They better be. Don't forget to point John.
Mr. Public?
Since our chairman is stepping down, standpoint, John Van is a voting member.
Sure.
This application is for Tandem Cross LLC. It's on Route 114.
Good evening, now I'm Craig Francisco of Bedford Zaga Sons. We were here roughly two months ago, month and a half, I believe, January 12th, two months ago. Conceptually, mostly to talk about deuse, I hope everybody remembers. This is the site that's across from Stark Tavern. So these are the guys that basically sell pistol parts to be used. The plan hasn't changed any since when we were here conceptually. The only thing I did do is the dumpster, you know, add more over here with the dumpsters, dumpsters farther here. The dumpster needs to be relocated. I added a bunch of notes. The site is serviced by existing well and septic, the septic is approved. I noted the construction approval number for 300, is that 68 or 80, I can't read the playing print. Either way. Must be 368 gallons per day.
Or 368.
So if you go through the regs now, the regs have changed how you calculate the gallons per day. I did it backwards, saying we can't go over 368, use the size of the building. The 2,000 square foot, the one specified office, at five gallons per day, is a hundred gallons a day, because that's about the office space in the building. With 16 employees, that gets you up to another 180. Well, I did a math mistake someplace, didn't I, guys? I left out the 3,000 square foot warehouse in my calculation to get to 360. So there's one change I gotta make right now. The site is in the aquifer protection district, the flood zone is in the back of the property. The wetland buffer has been disturbed under, prior to being, prior to the ordinance being passed. I did put the note down about the wetland buffer. We talked about deliveries when we were here conceptually. I just added note number 15, it specifies deliveries by UPS, FedEx, similar delivery company. Approximately once every three months, a semi trailer will deliver one to have a delivery. We're not proposing any lighting. I don't believe you want a new sign due, or new words on a sign maybe, but...
New words on existing sign.
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna go through the application now.
Sorry.
Application's dated 3/11/17. C item seven isn't checked off, but we've got a photo here that...
I didn't check it because I hadn't taken the photo yet, I apologize. Sure.
Oh, that's okay.
See an outline of a building. What is this photo supposed to depict?
It's the building.
Front of the building?
After that.
Oh, here.
You, the town needs to...
Oh, there's colored one, okay.
Need a, need a better copier.
Speak to the selectman.
I was, I was looking right at Mr. Plow when I said that.
We're about 12, Mr. Chairman.
12, that's what we're saying, if the bed material existing proposed, he said there wasn't any exterior lighting. He's got one existing, still on the plan.
There's two existing lights.
Two existing?
One in the front, the sidewalk, and one down, halfway down the building towards parking area.
So they're shown.
There's no, there's no proposed lighting. I didn't check it again because I didn't double check the lighting before I... The last notes I had to myself personally was to check the lighting, take a picture, and there was a third thing, but I don't remember what it was.
Location size, I guess, the, the sign's shown, you're not changing that.
That was, that was the third thing, I had to go measure the sign.
So is that illuminated or not?
It's not currently.
No.
Okay, we'll leave it that way.
All right, there is no point in changing it if we have to come back for approval, if we decided to light it, we don't have a problem with that.
Surely we'll take the rest of the party waivers. What was the operation on here?
Uh, I saw it, no, eleven.
It's a tracking paint table, it's all built, you know, that's done. We're motioning the application? It's all.
To accept.
Accept, yeah.
Second, please.
Second?
Neil, second by Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There being none? You wanna do a brief description of what you plan to do in there again? I don't think anyone's here.
So my name is Brian Haker, I reside in Hooksett, New Hampshire. I'm also Business Development Manager and co-owner of Tandem Cross. What we do at Tandem Cross is we OEM, retail, and manufacture aftermarket firearm parts, mostly for 22 race guns. We don't do any manufacturing on site, we would like to do some light manufacturing slash prototyping on site, is what we'd like to do with the purpose. We did come with a conceptual last time, and the board seemed to concur that what we described was okay. We plan to have offices in the front, warehousing in the middle of the building, and prototyping in the back of the building. Our office hours will be from... Our office hours will be from nine till six PM at night.
The office hours, seven to seven.
Oh, sorry, seven to seven. So we're not looking to make a, uh, a hurtful impact on the town of Ware, we hope to lift it up with employment and jobs and...
You doing your on-site sales?
No, we don't, but we might welcome a walk-in if that's okay. If not, then we won't do that. If somebody wants to pick up a part that they purchased online, we'll allow them to do that if that's okay with the planning board.
Yeah, we're just, just asking, see how much of this was retail area, but if it's, really isn't any, it's just if someone happens to still walk, you'll...
Yeah, we don't have any planned retail space, we would, uh, we would love to do something like that, but maybe in a different part of Ware. Uh, we see this strictly as kind of a corporate operations, in that perspective.
Will you be doing any test firing of any of your weapons or your prototypes that you're building?
It's a great question.
On this site?
Originally, we thought that we would like to do that, we started to investigate it, and we decided that we don't want to pursue that at this time, and should we want to pursue it, I know that was important to this board, that we put it on the site plan, so our commitment to you is that we would come back, should we decide to do something on site, um, to run it through and make sure the town is okay.
We can join the Lost Town Fishing Game Club, just behind you.
Yep.
Fire guns all day long.
That sounds perfect.
But, I mean, from what you described, you're not really, you're building accessories for these twenty-two speed guns, grips, and you're not really building the guns themselves, it's, right?
That's, that's correct, so we, we design, um, and when I say manufacturer we partner, or contract manufacturer with shops typically in New Hampshire, we have about twelve shops in New Hampshire that we work with now. We always look there first, if we can't, then we look to do it within the country.
What, can you describe the type of accessories you're, you're building for these?
Sure, um, everything from little tiny bushings, Yep. um, to triggers, to grips, um, compensators, springs.
Are you gonna be required to have a, uh, federal firearms license?
We are not required now, um, we would like to apply for one. Uh, makes the easier transfer of firearms, uh, for us. For instance, Smith and Wesson wants to send us a new version of their Victory Pistol. Rather than having to go through current FFL, we would like to receive it.
Do we have anything that regges about having FFLs in commercials, all gun dealers can? The commercials, all? I don't know.
We have gun dealers in the agriculture zone.
I'm just curious if we have anything, I don't have my book with me this evening, so...
Oh, you mean, is there anything in the regs about it?
Yeah, is there anything precluding him from going after his, getting his FFL?
No. And I will sign it gleefully.
Chairman? Yes?
You mentioned that you're not test firing guns, there's nothing here about that. Does that mean that you will?
No, it means that, uh, we will not, and if, should we choose to test fire guns on premise, we would come back to this board, um, and our commitment to you would be come back to, okay, and make sure we're working in partnership with you and the town of Ware.
Okay. Do you wanna change that note?
Uh...
What, we...
Probably note three.
Note three.
Just add something that the weapons will not be test fired on this site.
Well...
Or are, are you gonna read that into there since they...
I'm gonna read that into this, since they did specifically say they were.
There's a trouble with that, Neil, if he wants to do it, instead of coming to the board, he'll have to go get a variance, if we write it on there.
But Bruce is saying it's already on there, because he's talking about doing A, B's, and C. Since he didn't mention doing E, it's not there, he can't do it.
Right.
Okay. That's fine. Looking for motion?
I am.
You move to approve?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, appreciate that.
Welcome to town.
When are you gonna set up your printer?
By the way...
Yeah, we, we wanna see the three.
We wanna see the printer.
By the way, no ticker? Can I open and close the meeting to pull it in for?
Yes. About five minutes, I believe, in one. So, uh, towards the end of April, if you'd like to come and take a visit, we'd be happy to show you our three D printer, we actually have two that are really neat, I'm guessing this is off the record, but... Um, so we have one...
Your live TV though.
That's okay. Uh, one is additive, uh, SLAG? FDM, so it melts the plastic in, and builds up the material off of it. Uh, the other one's really neat, I think you'd find interesting, is it raises the objects out of a liquid, a goo, UV turbul resin. It uses a laser, uh, that sticks to the top of this plate that comes in and hardens it, it's got really good resolution, and really neat to, uh, wash.
You do the big plastic guns?
No. Um, but there are a lot of plastic guns out there, so, uh, but the barrel is almost always, you know, some sort of steel.
Do you do CNC machining there all the time, Frank?
Um, we will have a CNC machine on site for the prototyping and manufacturing, but it's not, I'm just... And we don't have one yet, so, that's phase two.
When, when it's all set up, I'd love to come see it also.
That'd be wonderful, we'd like that. Well, thank you for accepting us in your town, and, uh, really looking forward to being here.
We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Eight, so nine o'clock?
Nine?
Yep. We had two applications.
Ready for motion, Mr. Chairman?
No, no, I am not. Jeez.
Well, we got two submitted, please.
Well, I approve these immediately.
You know, you did give me one of those, I looked at it, I said, what the hell is this, I threw it to the pile on your desk.
I know, I gave you one.
I shall step down again? I shall step down?
Oh, no, I don't...
I'm, I'm gonna step in and therefore you step down. So we have minutes from, uh, March ninth?
Yep, two sets of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the sidewalk on March nine.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This is going?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I have two little things to include on the regular minutes of March nine.
Me too.
I have apostrophe after...
I will send you these electronically. So you can just correct.
First line of the applicant is seeking planning boards, so apostrophe S.
Okay, yep.
And then on the second line, just include the word "nap" before two oh three, not two oh three.
My changes are, in the attendees, it's Dan Higgins' son, Higgins.
Okay.
And therefore, in the first item on the agenda, it's Dan Higgins' son again. If I'm not mistaken, isn't Mr. Vandersloot, isn't the Van capitalized?
No.
No?
He wrote the minutes.
I, I kinda thought he did, but then how do you mess up his own name?
Reason why you know he wrote the minutes were that they were very brief, mercifully brief.
So I have two Higgins', is all I have. In the list of attendees, and on the first, film all removal, we strip.
I'll make a note and approve the March ninth minutes as amended.
Second.
Discussion?
Neil?
The only thing I would change up at the top where it says draft, change that to final.
Well, yeah. Discussion?
That's a given.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would she like these?
Yes.
I thought she might.
And we'll still send them to you.
Well, that has my, that has my red scribbles on it, with the board don't change this too.
Yeah, so she gets my electronic copy, puts your scribble on it, and it's done.
Um, I have emailed Southern New Hampshire Planning twice now, asking about the master plan, I have not heard back yet. I think I will give Sylvia or somebody a call. This is Dylan Munretired, I just saw it, Priest is retired, it could be Jeff. Chuck, he's killing, but we'll call him, Jeff.
And it, and it appears that Sylvia's gonna be the Mifwick down there.
So she might be kinda busy with everybody retiring all of a sudden. So I'll give somebody a call, and see if I can get ahold of somebody. That's all I had.
Move to adjourn.
Everybody seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.